On the order, please rise for the flag salute. Chief Biagi, will you please lead us?
Yes, I would also like a moment of silence again.
Yeah.
For our Marines who we've lost and overseas tonight.
Yes.
Attention salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence, please.
Yes. You read my mind, Doug. I was gonna wait till after the flag salute. Please, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kriebel.
Here.
Commissioner Langgraf.
Here.
Mayor Holtzman.
Here. We're showing to the Open Publics Meeting Act adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. So for the people here in the public, what we do is we go through our workshop portion, so we will go through everything that we're going to vote on tonight while we go into our regular meeting and anyone out there in Zoom land. Okay? So we do not have any presentations this evening. We do not have any department heads reporting. We do not have capital being discussed. The following items are scheduled for action when we close the workshop portion and go into our regular meeting. We have no minutes to prove this week. And we do have three ordinances to introduce. I'll read them briefly and then Commissioner Langgraf will give a little quick 4-1-1's idea of what it is because that is his specialty. So the first ordinance we're introducing tonight is 2021-017. It's creating Chapter 113, Construction of Bulkheads and Seawalls. Mr. Langgraf?
So what? Go read them all because they're all tied together.
Okay, that's fine with me. The next is 2021-018 and that's supplementing Chapter 102, Section 160.4, which is the Fee Schedule, Waivers and Other Permit Fees. And then the third is 2021-019, Amending and Supplementing Chapter 102, Section 118.5, Fences and Walls. So.
Okay, so these, as I said, these are all related, and thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, all related to bulkheads in the city of Ventnor. The first one, I'm gonna read some notes I have here. All are related to bulkheads. Ordinance 17 creates a new chapter, 103, Construction of Bulkheads and Seawalls. 18 amends Chapter 102, Section 160.4 to establish fee for bulkhead permit and also an escrow for inspections for that. And then Section 19, Chapter 102, Section 118.5, Fences and Walls refer to new Chapter 103. So it kicks you where there used to be some things that talked about bulkheads, we amended that to put it all into the new ordinance. And the reason is, what this actually does, it requires a resident, commercial or residential property owner, that if you do a substantial amount to your property, elevate the home, do more than 50% of its value, when that's a FEMA regulated number, it's a 50% of your home's value. If your bulkhead is in disrepair or if it's too low, you have to make it comply with the FEMA requirements. We've asked nicely for people to do that when they renovate their homes and we're not getting the cooperation we need. So we have to put something in that protects us as an island. Bulkheads are not the answer to everything, but they help. They help with, they help with wave action. Do we have to turn our volume down?
No, mine, my fault. Sorry.
Sorry? I thought my time was up. Wait a minute. I get more than three minutes, I think. So essentially, that's why those three ordinances, and I want to thank both Ed Stinson, Leo Manos, our Planning Board Solicitor, Roger McLaren, our Planning Board Engineer and Planner, and Tim McGuire for getting this together, and Jimmy Agnesino as well. I think Dino was thrown in there too because it's flood-related. So this will help require these bulkheads. It's an expense. If you remember, we tried to create a program where we created a redevelopment plan in all the areas where bulkhead exists on the island. We created the redevelopment plan, but we could not get it funded. The idea was to put a low interest or zero interest loan out there for people to build new bulkhead on their properties or renovate their bulkhead with those funds. And we tried ACIA, we tried private funding, we tried a lot of different places. We're not able to get it done. We even tried federal government, tried Army Corps. So not giving up on it, but I've run out of places to ask for dollars at this point and we're not allowed to do it.
Right.
My gut reaction was that, let's put a capital improvement together that it's a revolving fund.
Right.
We cannot use city dollars, taxpayer dollars to fund private property. Without a tax thing or something like that, it's restriction. So I had a very nice conversation with our legal counsel, our bond counsel about that. They kind of shut me down. So.
Restricted fund.
You can't do that.
Yes.
So that's those three ordinances.
Great. Okay. Okay with that, Commissioner?
Yes, thanks.
The next, we will have a public hearing on the ordinance and then adoption of 2021-016. And this is supplementing Chapter 87, Buildings Numbering. The numbers of the house, the address will go from three inches to four inches going forward. Existing properties do not change the number on their house.
We would encourage people to do that.
Right. With that?
Yes.
Okay. And then the next is a list of resolutions that we will be voting on by consent. So I'll go through them. I have some notes, so go from there. First is 2021-271, and that's authorizing a person-to-person place-to-place transfer of a, and I'm not gonna try to say liquor license. I'm not even gonna go in there. It's a pocket license now, but it will become active and it will be on Dorset Avenue. But I think this is more of like going to be a wine cellar. However, having a liquor license, they could still sell whatever. But there is requirements of the distance from the other existing business there. We'll go with that?
Yes.
Okay. Next is 2021-272, and that is adopting a Green Grounds and Maintenance Policy. We've achieved the Bronze Award in Sustainable New Jersey Program, and we are looking to step it up and get to the Silver Award. And we've done this through our Green Team. Correct?
Yep.
Go with that?
Yes.
Next is 2021-273, and this is authorizing hiring part-time traffic school guards. Chief Biagi, just a quick question.
Yes.
Are these new people or is this just?
No, it's just we do, we should do this every year.
Every year. This is the same people.
Same people. We have, I think, one alternate and one of our ultimates is now.
And they get sworn in.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted, I was just curious.
You're absolutely correct.
All right. The next is 2021-274, and that is amending Resolution 101 of 2021, Appointing Individuals to our Ad Hoc Citizen Advisory Committee. And tonight we are adding John Egner.
Egner.
Egner. Okay. The next is 2021-275, and this is amending Resolution 036 of 2021, Appointing Planning Board Members for the Year of 2021. It's moving alternates up to voting members, correct? And then everybody moves up.
There was a vacancy when Tom McAdam left.
Right.
He moved out of the town. Big loss to our planning board, I will say, in the city. So everyone will step up one. Peter Taco will be a full voting member. And then Don Siglin will be the new member. He'll be a class or an alternate four. So he won't get to vote a lot.
Sorry.
Yep. And Don's a former architect. I guess he never stopped being an architect, but.
Yeah. Or is he an engineer or?
Yeah.
Yeah, good guy. Next is Resolution 2021-276, and this is amending Resolution 105 of 2021. This is, it's changing the date for our block party. We originally had a date in May, but before there were lists from the governor for gatherings, we decided to cancel it and reschedule for October 16th. Go with that? Okay. The next is 2021-277, Authorizing an Unpaid Leave of Absence for, I know him as Frenchy, and I'm not even gonna try to pronounce his name.
Theo File.
Theo File.
Robisher.
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 Okay.
Beautiful.
I like French. It's a lot easier. He works in our public works.
He does. Good employee.
He is. He's great. He's been there forever.
Everything you see painted in the city.
I know, I know.
Probably twice.
Yeah. Or more. The next is 2021-278, and that's authorizing disposal of our surplus property. From what I see, we have four vehicles and a variety of computer equipment, and that will be done through an auction, correct? Government auction.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll go with that?
Yes.
The next is 2021-279, Amending Resolution 104 of 2021, Authorizing the No Parking During the Block Party, which will be October 16th, 6:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. on October 16th. We're good?
Yes.
All right. The next is 2021-280, Awarding an Emergency Contractor for Repairs and Replacing the Failing Pumps at Lilly Park and Lafayette Station.
Self-explanatory.
Self-explanatory.
Failing pumps, we have to get them in the.
At least it's not such a big number. It's not too many zeros. Anyway, let me not jinx us. The next is Resolution 2021-281, and that's authorizing emergency electrical repair of the pump to the water sewer system. This is.
That's the well. This is a big deal. But I mean, it's not crazy expensive, but it's, what's the number, $62.50? This is why well number eight is down right now.
This is the problem with.
Yeah. So just so everybody knows, we have an interconnect with our water system with the city of Atlantic City. We had to enact or open that valve up about, say, last week in order to make sure we had the proper water to service our residents. We're good. We're safe. We have plenty of water. But soon as this well gets fixed, which should be soon, we'll be back in better shape. We have to shut that down.
Great. Thank you.
It's a good, good thing to have. It's well safe and it's working.
Okay, next, 2021-282, and this is authorizing the purchase of closed circuit surveillance system, awarding it to Safewear Inc. And this is for, for security for City Hall, Public Works Building and Fire Station 2. So it's just a quick question. Why is Fire Station 1 not listed?
It actually is, it actually is on there, but because of some logistical things, it will include cameras at Station 1.
Thank you. Thank you.
Voice.
It was like the Wizard of Oz. It was like behind a curtain.
Attention to the man.
Okay, thank you. That is funny. That's the end of my question there. We're good?
Yes.
The next is 2021-283, and this is a tax abatement for the property located at 129 North Newark Avenue. Next is 2021-284, A Refund for Water and Sewer Overpayment. Next is 2021-285, and it's Refunding Recreation Fees to Residents. The next is 2021-286, and that's authorizing acceptance of an agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management to purchase vehicles under their Sourcewell Cooperative Pricing Agreement. And this is a cost savings to the taxpayers, correct?
Correct. It's all bonded out.
Next is 2021-287, and this is hiring Sean Kenny as Public Safety Communication Training. Chief Biagi?
Yes.
Is this a, is this someone from in-house somewhere or is this a?
This is actually a, just actually a training from another city that's merging.
Gotcha. So this is some, perfect. Okay. No employee with experience.
Correct. We had one of those.
Worked out and went back. Perfect. Yeah, the name didn't look familiar. That's why I thought I would just say.
No, he's been vetted by Catherine Foster. Did a good job. So it's good for him.
Thank you. Then we will have, our CFO will give us the dollar amount for our bills and payrolls for the period. And that now brings us to our discussion item. So we will have, we have one discussion item this evening. We will talk about it. And then after that, we will have a public portion. That public portion will be on anything that we are going to vote on will be on the discussion item as well. Should we do it then? Yes?
Say it again. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So the, after we open it to the public, it'll be on any, you can come up, you can question or ask or comment on anything that I just read that we're going to vote on or the discussion item that we're going to discuss tonight. Then there will be another public portion at the end of the meeting if you have something that totally unrelated to tonight's agenda, but you're here for, you want to say what you have to say. All right. So there's two public portions. So our discussion item listed is Overnight Parking of Construction Vehicles. We have Chief Biagi here and from emails from residents, there seemed to have been a lot of communication. So I can't, I don't see too many people in the chambers. I don't know how many people are in Zoom. But with all due respect, everyone will have a chance to speak. If there's a lot of people out and about tonight for this discussion item, we have a policy. We don't usually stick to it if it's something one or two. But you will state your name and your address, say what you have to say after we have our discussion, and you will be limited to three minutes because I want everybody to have a chance to speak. And I don't think anybody on a beautiful summer night wants to be, be part of a discussion that is going on and on and on and really going nowhere. So.
Before we do that, just one statement. It says construction vehicle.
It's not. It's commercial.
Commercial.
Commercial. I was gonna, I was gonna be on first.
Commercial vehicle.
Right.
Okay. That's what I thought originally, but.
It just so happens that this one is a construction, was a construction vehicle, but it's commercial.
So.
Yes.
Here, we have a device for you.
Here you go. Hold on.
This will, this will take our speakers and put it right in your ear. You can adjust the volume on it. After doing anything, just do that. Two, two or three at least.
Yeah, we have a couple. Remember Linda Caplan just to come on? Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Like Linda Caplan. She started liking us. She don't come anymore.
If you want to sing, we have a cordless mic too.
What'd you say, Tom?
She's not over there. Just ask her to come on. When you, when you want to speak, sir.
Yeah, she, yeah, we got that for her. She was really excited.
How's that working?
Okay.
You hear anything?
Testing, testing.
All right.
All right. Great.
Dude, we were talking bad about you then.
Technology at work right there. It's awesome.
Okay, so who wants to start this ball rolling?
It should probably be me.
Okay. Doug, Chief, just put the mic a little closer to you maybe. Are you gonna talk to us?
I'm gonna talk to kind of everybody.
Now I can hear you.
As I've said in my post and as I've said to everybody, this is one of those ordinances that rears its ugly head every once in a while. And in talking to both sides, it's either you're on, you fall on the side of, this is an eyesore. I don't want vehicles parked after nine o'clock on the streets. And to the people that own those vehicles, they are sometimes the only vehicle they have besides their personal vehicle, or they don't have off-street parking. So it really becomes a conundrum because we only, what we've done to get away from hammering everybody, because some neighborhoods are more tolerant than others. Some people don't want a commercial truck in front of their house or in their neighborhood parking. And if you have one, you may have five or six commercial workers on your street that happen to be, so you may have five or six trucks. Some people do not care. I would say a majority of the city does not care, but we do have an ordinance on the books. So what we've done over the years, as long as I've been and for Chief Schaefer, which was back in the 80s and 90s, well, it's ironic, fate, is that we would do it on complaint, which made it much easier. So what happens is a person would call up after nine o'clock, any commercial vehicle, and we would, they would say, there's this truck that's in the park. And we keep it anonymous because that was always the way to do things. You didn't want to start up any, any problems in a neighborhood. So I live, you know, I'm a neighbor and I have a problem. This guy always parks on the street. Okay, we go over, we give them a warning. And usually what happens is we don't end up giving tickets unless they don't move their trucks inside, on, off the streets into a drive. But what, what normally happens is the, the American way, the instinct is to say, why am I the only person getting a ticket? So then what you do is you go around and you say, hold it. There's 40 other people in Ventnor that are doing the same thing as I am. Why are they not getting tickets? Then we get a list and then that becomes the police department's go-to list because now we're having a complaint and we have to respond to that. And especially with, in a day and age where you don't selectively enforce anything, we are put in a position now to utilize that ordinance until the complaints stop. But what normally happens is the complaints then increase. And it brings this to head that this ordinance has flaws and may not be consistent with the needs of the people or the workers in the town now, as opposed to the 70s and 80s when whatever was going on. So that's where we are. This conversation comes along every so often. There's people that are the recipients of the tickets and then become the, the voice of, I don't want to say opposition, but the voice of the commercial vehicle owners. Okay? Now, I happen to live back in that neighborhood and I happen to know both parties involved. And I've actually had conversations with him. And through the COVID thing, there was a neighbor that was concerned that the amount of trucks that were in parking outside of his house were excessive. And it was sometimes it would run, it was three at the most, and sometimes it would be two. But the neighbor was really good in letting me try to work it out. And he was good too. But a lot of times, workers, like our gentleman here, have jobs in town. And for them to drive their vehicles offshore to a work pit or a workplace and then have your guys go out there and come back when you're doing work on Newark and Monmouth, it is not, it's counterproductive.
Right.
So we try to give benefits to that. But sometimes it happens like in the middle of the summer and it affects 20 or 30 people. And now all of a sudden, we have this conversation. Is it time to start tweaking it or leave it as it is and continue on the path we're on?
Let me ask you a question. In that ordinance, is, or is it a separate ordinance with boat trailers and boats?
It's all the same thing.
It's all the same.
It's all the same.
RVs.
Good.
All the same.
I have a ride with me and actually, if I could just answer that, it's, it is a wide-reaching ordinance that includes boat trailers, vacation trailers, camper trailers, jitney buses, boats. And it's, and it's, and it's upon any street, road, or public highway in the city of Ventnor between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. So it's a, it's a very large net. It includes, it's the half-fun trucks and more.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Are we talking about like, like a painter, small, like a van?
We can have a really, a commercial vehicle in police terms.
Has commercial.
It's got a commercial tag on it.
Right.
And it's got external writing on it.
Right.
Okay.
But they may, they may, I mean, I'm looking at this as these vehicles are no bigger and maybe even smaller than some of the SUVs that people own.
There are usually, some are. Construction trucks are sometimes if they're a dually or some can get quite big.
But you're right. Some of them.
Some of them are no bigger than somebody's SUV.
A lot of them are trending towards the European style.
Right.
It's minivan, a small van.
We're not talking about Mac Trons.
Do you want a bunch of panel vans or painters' vans with ladders? Again, I'm saying Ventnor for life. I'm not worried about my value going upward. But there are people that are concerned about that makes my neighborhood look less than it should.
Homeowners associations have those.
They do have them. But this is where it gets really, the, the ordinance is so open-ended. It's so broad that any person with a vendetta for anybody else could go and use that against people. And it's happened. It's not, it's, it's, this is not the case with this. This was a neighbor who was, she had no, she had no ulterior motive other than she didn't like it. And she's allowed to have that feeling. She's allowed to have that feeling. But in this day and age, I think maybe it's time to maybe look at it and maybe narrow the broadness of that. Or maybe, again, I wouldn't want a panel truck or something big, you know, if it's bigger than. Just four wheels or something.
Yeah.
Right. Right. I don't want a moving truck or something that's or.
Also, there's a point where there's no, a number of them, where it looks like a commercial law.
Right.
There's three or four. But there's no, there's no, there's no legal re, there's no, there's no legal reason.
But it is a double-edged sword because we also have homes that are getting worked on that leave trailers overnight. Now, they technically are in violation.
Right.
We're in a building boom right now. And during the summer, it has created some issues. So maybe we need to tweak certain things, like maybe no equipment on the streets during the summer months.
So one of the things we're, I've talked about with Jimmy is something like that as well as no demolition in the summer.
Quarter potties on the curb of homes.
But again, this is. But we don't want to get away from, we don't want to get away from what the sides are is, do we want to take a blue collar worker that's working?
Right.
When he has one vehicle, he doesn't have the luxury of having three vehicles.
Right.
A personal vehicle to take his family out and to pick up. Some people have just that one.
Right.
So I think maybe the time has come for you to maybe shrink it down a little bit and think of what is really what we're after here and what is our end game.
Right.
And that's.
You gotta be equitable. You got, somebody might have that truck and other homes might have four cars.
But.
That have to park in front of your house, their house too, and their driveway.
Yeah. So what's the difference there?
What's the difference?
Well.
Maybe that's not a track.
I, I think the difference is that people should have the right to say, I don't want that in my neighborhood, or it looks ugly when it's been around for 50 years. But in the same breath, we have to look at the socioeconomic issues right now.
Right.
And we have to address that as well and not, and not kind of jerk the people that are trying to make ends meet, doing these horrible times, doing everything the right way. So.
I think we take a look at it with your staff, Mr. Kriebel. You guys take a look at it. I'll look at some other ordinances in other towns and see what we can come up with. It's more equitable. I like that word.
Yes. Did I pretty much hit all the notes on that? Is there something you would like to say? This is, he was the catalyst and he openly has been working.
Yeah.
Did you get the ticket?
Yeah.
Yes, he is the receiver.
It happened a year ago. Got a warning like Doug said. Everything was ironed out. No problems. Since the ticket, warning and the ticket, and obviously I took what I could do to try to make this a better ordinance. Because the problem is where do we park them? We can't park them from the house. We don't have a lot. You know, I mean, we're, Acme's not a safe place to put $20,000 in tools in a truck, you know? So we have nowhere to put them. So like he said, we go out to Eckhart Township, race two hours a day. When 99% of my work is at Ventnor Margate. I pull everything by the box. I file my permits. I do everything I'm supposed to do. And it's kind of like, wow, you made something yourself. Now let's knock you down. You know what I mean? So I don't believe, fair is a bad word, I guess, because everybody's two sides to the coin. Ordinance has been in since 1988, I believe. So maybe it is time for a little tweaking, a little, I could see buses, things like that. I have an F-450, then I have a, it's a GMC van with side utility boxes. But are they a little wide, wider than a normal vehicle? Yes. But my three-quarters ton pickup truck is over the half-ton ordinance. That's registered residential. It's not commercial.
Right.
You know what I mean? So and that's my personal vehicle, so I can't take him and my work trucks. Since the ticket, I put one in my driveway, which kind of sticks on my neighbor's grasp. It's a low blood by, I told you that. And my other employee has taken one back to the condos in Ventnor Heights. That's where he lives. So we kind of got him off the streets to comply with the ordinance. Other notes, like, I could see Winchester, Monmouth, around.
You're in the Heights?
I'm, I'm with, with Hickin.
Oh, he's near you.
Yes. Yeah. But I mean, you drive through the Heights. I mean, there's, you know.
And the streets are wide.
And the streets are wide, right? So like certain streets, you could see it. Winchester coming around the corner, there's that kitchen bath guy there for the all summer.
And you can't say.
I had a problem, but like, I don't know, that's my discretion. I wouldn't do that. You know, I mean, if I do leave a trailer overnight, I usually make a phone call and see if it's cool. And I don't do it during the summer. I had a job on Frankfurt Avenue. I actually had a whole demo job of a 100-year-old home that I took a trailer day by day so I wouldn't block the alley. So it's more like I'm being respectful as much as I can being in the business. You know what I mean? So I know other towns have the ordinance. You said you were gonna look it up. I think every town has. Brigadier Team, that's where I grew up.
I think we need to make it better.
Yes, tweak it. Brigadier Team does have a small lot, right? Consider all the parked commercial vehicles. Margate does, but.
I don't know if you do that anymore.
We are.
There's jitneys there. I was just there, I was working there all last winter. It's like, it's very small, right?
That issue, I know where it is.
Yeah.
I lived there myself.
Okay. So I was born and raised there. So I believe Ocean City, I was told, has a commercial lot. Not 100% sure. I know Margate doesn't. I know they have the ordinance, but like, they say they enforce it. They tell me they enforce it, but if you drive, Brando's vans are on the avenue every day. And I'm not like ratting nobody out. The point is like, we gotta.
Think of.
It's gotta be a.
We'll have to look. Look, this was originally written in 80.
88.
87.
It was 80, yeah.
Yeah. And then it looks like 88 is tweaked again. So, and then 92 was the bottom section. But we'll, we'll, like I said, Public Safety look at it. We'll have our city solicitor take.
What we did right now is we just kind of halted. Yeah.
Agreed.
Slow down the front. Everybody knows that this is a discussion, that you guys are aware of it. And we haven't been getting a lot of complaints about commercial vehicles overnight where people are calling up saying, oh, this is a big deal. I had this problem too. It's not. It is limited. It is not a huge deal. The ordinance has really worked.
But it's a big deal to this.
But right this second, in this, in this moment in time, right now, it's an issue. So it is affecting him and potentially a bunch of other construction guys or workers.
Right.
Like, uh, at the very least, utility trucks like for Atlantic Electric and New Jersey Gas, we've got to have a way of keeping. You know, so we do have to keep up with, we have a lot of guys, even, even taxi guys or tow truck guys that have their vehicles and they're on call for AAA or other departments. So there is room for improvement and adjustment. And I think we should just look at it and have a real good conversation.
Yeah.
All right.
I think that's what we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I don't think I have, I mean, just like, maybe you limit how far you park from corners to help see.
Yeah, that, that, that's, yeah.
Whatever, just because I have trouble and I'm like, why does this guy do this?
That makes me nervous. Even a van, just a, just a personal, a bit, a van.
You can't see, right? Let's be fair.
Can we get your name?
George Robert J. H E R. M is a Mary, L E Y. Pym, K, E E, N is Nancy. Two first names, two last names. Robert John Hermley King.
Robert John.
Hermley King.
It's very regal.
Very regal.
Yeah.
That's a very well behaved young man.
I'm bribing. I'm bribing the hell out of them.
Oh, what did he get you for here?
Right, ice cream McDonald's, got ice cream McDonald's.
You got it all. Happy meal. You go for it. You're a very well behaved young man, sir.
So moving forward, how do we want to deal with the next, let's say two weeks?
I would.
While we still have an issue.
I think we just.
I think the response would be, we're looking at the warnings.
Exactly. Is that a fair?
I think so.
Yeah. And I agree. That's what we've been doing and I just wanted to continue that.
I agree.
Until we figure this out.
And we, and on complaint, not, we're not, and, and on complaint, we're not, we're not going out there to.
But there's gonna be a point where we have to figure this out and solidify it moving forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, we sure will have some ideas.
We do. We have a lot of ideas and we'll talk about them later.
Yeah. So to clarify that, it's like, right now it's okay to park in the street.
No, what I'm saying is if you, I would continue to try and find alternate.
Right, okay.
But we're gonna continue to give warnings if you happen to be out there. It's, I think it's a fair.
Yeah.
We're still gonna call you out on it and you may ultimately, but while we're figuring this out.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna just, I guess, a moratorium or a, yes, for, for now.
Right.
Okay?
Okay, cool.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert.
No, he's been awesome. He's really.
High five.
Oh. And this is where I go psyched, you know?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. Doug, Doug, excuse me, is that a real tomato?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where did it come from?
Let me tell you where it came from. I had it fun in the middle.
Here we go.
Where's the tight pants? He talks Italian.
That's.
He's not his own, he's not his own video.
Oh my, I've never seen, can I say it?
Creeply on, you know it.
Is it from him?
Creeply on.
Wait a minute, where did you?
I got, I did.
Where's mine?
They're coming, they're coming, they're coming.
Oh, mom.
He had you going with you.
Creeply on.
Two I have, really good.
Really?
They don't grow, get ripe at once.
Did you get any yet? You're lying to me.
I got one from Alex. I didn't get one from Tim.
Stop by on the way home.
We'll do that.
So wrong.
At so many levels, but it feels so right.
All right. So, so we're good?
We are good.
Yeah.
The one thing too, also when you're dealing with this, and I know you and, um, Commissioner Kreebel and Maria will be doing a live discussion. One thing to keep in mind, cause, cause I would always get, um, text when you have a pretty big truck on Dorset Avenue, cause a person lives there. And it blocks parking spots. Yeah, and I've had a re, I, I mean, like, ah, yeah, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I'm only talking about like one, allowing one truck.
Right, right.
Listen, my mother's going to grow up with builders and areas with three trucks. And I wouldn't want to be that person either with three trucks in front of my.
Right. Well, this is like one of those pretty big commercial product trucks.
We do jump on them. Some.
Oh, I know.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
There's ones that are issues like that, line of sight issues.
And they're always, and they're, and they're taking up parking spots for those businesses, that little block and vet or their wall. And that's a problem.
Little tweak, that's all we need on.
Just keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Just, uh.
Can we start calling that the new pickleball center or are we gonna speak, kill, continue to call it the old wall wall?
Old wall wall.
Or the new pickleball.
The new pickleball.
Well, or, or the other, the other thing everybody said was gonna make.
One of his friends sort of thing, you know?
Yeah.
Building formerly known as wall.
Yeah.
Building formerly known as Dorset Market.
Nothing compared to that.
Remember?
That's right.
Dorset Market, growing up as a kid with the squeaky door, the screen door that was held was broken. Have it on the floor. Yeah. Sorry.
I want to know how his wedding was.
Okay, so, um, now we'll move on to the public portion.
Yes, this gentleman wanted to talk about the, the.
Well, I.
Oh.
No, he's not here. Yeah, we're good. So now I'll open it to the public.
Yeah.
So we really didn't open to the public.
No, let's do it.
But, um, I'm enjoying it. Okay, so do I have a motion to open public portion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now it's open to the public if anybody would like to speak on anything that we discussed thus far before we go into our regular meeting and vote. And Jim, you can ask anybody and do your spiel.
If anybody who is on Zoom who would like to speak on any of the items that were discussed tonight that are being voted on or within the discussion items, please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand or within the chat feature and you'll be recognized. Once recognized, you can turn your camera on, give your name and address and speak to the commission. I do not see anyone.
No one?
Nope.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close public portion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to close workshop portion and call to order the regular meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have no minutes. Our first ordinance introduction is twenty twenty-one dash zero seventeen. Do I have a motion to introduce this ordinance?
Motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one seven.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa roll call please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Do I have a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-one?
I'm in about five minutes left or so.
Excuse me? Twenty twenty-one dash zero one eight.
Motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one eight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Lisa roll call please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Do I have a, do I have a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one nine?
Motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one nine.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, Lisa roll call please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Next is the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one six. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open hearing, public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Cause now we are open to the public. If anyone would like to speak on this ordinance own.
Anybody in the audience on Zoom who wishes to speak a question on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one six? Please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand or within the chat feature and you'll be recognized. I don't, do not see anyone.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to close public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one six?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one six?
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Lisa roll call please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Do I have a motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty-one dash two seventy-one through twenty twenty-one dash two eighty-seven by consent?
Make a motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty-one dash two seven one through two eight seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Lisa roll call please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yeah.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Uh, Al, could you please give us our total for bills and payroll for this period?
Yes, the bill list for this period is three million, four hundred forty-one thousand, fifteen dollars and forty-five cents. And there was two payrolls this period, first one being six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred nineteen dollars and twelve cents. And the second being seven hundred twenty-three thousand, one seventy-five fifteen.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve bills and payrolls dated from our CFA?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Lisa roll call please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yeah.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Yeah, our, our safety report is here listed for the records. So the next item on my agenda is commissioners' comments or reports. So Commissioner Langria, do you have anything you'd like to speak about?
Not a whole lot. We have, we finishing up our bidding and some of the things that'll start in the fall with construction projects. You'll start seeing things popping, road projects, curb and gutter projects, um, those kinds of things. Coming in the fall is we don't do them this summer. So they're all out to bid right now. We got good prices on most things and they're coming in with, with those awards soon.
Great.
So.
People?
Uh, I think we touched on a couple of discussion items from now.
We're good.
We're good for now.
All right. I just have two things real quick. Uh, I'm glad Chief Biogis is here. I was stopped by a resident, uh, who raved about you all the way down to all your, or all the way, yeah, all the way down to all your officers. And also made a def, a special mention of with the class two. Um, I've also received a lot of emails, uh, my phone wasn't working for quite a while. Um, and a lot of very positive comments about our police work as well as our class twos. And they're specific with that too.
We had a very successful year with our class, uh, one, Wardwell Cubs and our class who've been very blessed.
Yes, they're great.
Yes.
But, but I want you to know that I was stopped.
Appreciate it. I'll pass it on to everybody. Thank you very much.
The other thing I just want to mention is, um, the, um, we are one of eight municipalities that have joined with county for the consolidation of our courts. Um, I would say that there's probably going to be a few more municipalities that jump on before we actually go live on January one, but I don't know. We have, um, some very large municipalities, Eckhart Township, Hamilton Township, Galloway. Uh, then we have a few of the small ones, Waymouth, Still Manor. We have Linwood, Northfield and Vettner. So, um, it's moving forward very fast. Uh, the Personnel Committee met, um, that committee is the, is the committee, uh, that I'm on that is trying to figure out, um, what titles are going to be used. It's, it's under the county till it becomes civil service. Titles, positions, amount of positions and things like that. And we had our first meeting. It was very, very productive, but it is moving fast. And, um, and I'm excited because us doing that here in Vettner is, I think, a savings to our taxpayers.
It was about a penny.
It's definitely a savings in city.
Yes.
About a penny without a loss in revenue.
Yes.
Exactly.
Good work by you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It, it was, it was great. I mean, it's, it was great because it was a, it was a few mayors involved and then there was the court administration and some judges from the courts and then the county, uh, legal head counsel. But the meetings, um, and then we had state, the state, um, people involved. And when the legislation got passed, um, through the senate and then the assembly and the governor signed it, that was huge because if that legislation wasn't passed, we would have still been able to do it, but it would have had it been, a, a municipality would have had it been considered the lead agency.
Right.
Now it can go fall under the county umbrella. So I'm excited about that.
And they got money for it too.
Yes, we, yeah, we, we have a grant. Yep, we had the grant and they're renovating the old, uh.
Courthouse.
Courthouse, yes. So, um, I'm excited about it because I've been involved with it. It's almost a year, I think it's about a year now since it started with the committee.
They're renovating the old courthouse where?
It may be landing.
May be landing?
Yes, the building are gonna use it.
Yes.
Great.
Yeah. So.
I happened to be in Brigantine, our city council meeting when the county was, they were discussing, I don't think the county was actually there, but there was a detailed plan out, outlawed for that. So they were trying to get Brigantine involved.
Right, right.
Happened to be at their council meeting last month, month before or something like that.
So, but I'm excited about it because it.
Yeah.
I think, I think, I think that's, you know, residents want to see shared services or consolidations. It's a savings and I, and I think it's great that then there's consistency with the way the residents of the county or at least these eight municipalities, you're dealing with the same judges, prosecutors, defenders. So I think it's great.
Is there an electronic component as well where people?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
A lot of Zoom.
A lot of Zoom.
Take some of that away.
Absolutely. Yes.
Great.
So that's all I really think I have to say right now. And so now open it up to the public. The next is our last and final piece of the public comment. You can say, come up to the microphone if you're in the chambers or. Wait your turn if you're in Zoom and you can speak on anything. State your name and address. Tell us what you want to ask us, tell us, comment, whatever. Do I have a motion to open the public comment?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, good evening.
Good evening.
Um. I had a schedule change about maybe two or three years ago. I used to come here regularly and I'm absolutely almost shocked to see there's no people here. It used to be fifteen, twenty people and I'm just.
Sir, sir, you need your name.
What's your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Marvin Berman, B E R M A N, fourteen South Victoria Avenue. Vetner, obviously. Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank you so much for this is, this is great.
Wonderful.
Yeah, okay. My main purpose for being here is the Vetner City Bicycle Ordinance. I think it's number seventy-five and then there's like ten sections of it. I don't know if you've ever seen it. I had a, I copied it out, but I gave my copy to Mike Weisen. Weizen?
Mike Weisen.
Yeah.
What's your question?
So, yeah?
What's your question about?
Oh, what's your question? Okay. There's a number of questions. First of all, almost none of it is followed. Second, one of the paragraphs says, and I think it must be an, a typo. But it says that riding on pavements is lawful. It probably should say unlawful. I don't believe riding on pavements is, is a, is a.
It is.
Is a thing that people want to see.
Well, it's whether you want to see it or not, it's one of those things that you don't want your three-year-old kid riding the street. So you do it, we do allow riding on bicycles on the sidewalk.
No, I, I have, I have no problem. I have nine grandchildren and they ride their bikes, the little ones ride their bikes on the, on the pavement. But I also have a dog. And I'm walking a dog and adults or at least teenagers are riding bikes behind me. I don't see them coming. They don't bother to, to signal me, yell at me, anything. And it's hard when you're walking a dog. Sometimes the dog goes in a different direction and it's dangerous. I actually walked around a corner and somebody was coming on the pavement the opposite direction. It was at Vetner and, and Little Rock. And I, I missed the bike maybe, I don't know, by six inches maybe. It's, it's, it's dangerous. Now. It's one thing for people to do, you know, for, for citizens to do that, which is dangerous, especially for old people like me. But the police, when they make their patrols, are riding on a pavement and not one person that I see has, there's an ordinance that says if you have a bicycle. It must have a bell or a horn or something to signal people. None of the bikes, not, not even the police bikes have horns or bells to signal anybody.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's, to me, if you read the ordinances, a lot, for example, something, some ordinance, I don't know that are really of any value. But like, for example, the first ordinance is that every bike has to be registered. And every bike apparently, according to Mike, has a serial number on it. And he was willing to do it for free. But nobody's doing it and that would help if a bike is stolen. We'd be able to trace the, the serial number. But without people registering the bikes. But to me, that's not a safety issue. The safety issue is that I walk my dog and people coming behind me, sometimes four or five people on the same time. Riding a bike. I don't want to belabor the whole point. I think you guys got the idea.
Unfortunately, I mean, we can, you know, we can look into it, but I mean. It's a, that would be common courtesy. It's like when you work.
That's what's lacking.
That's what's lacking in society. I mean, you work, when you work in a restaurant, the one thing you learn is when you have food and hot food and you go behind another server, you say, hot. And it, and it's a language and you know to be careful. I mean, I understand your point. I would, you know, I would hate to see you get injured. You would think.
Sort of line.
Yeah, you would think that people or the dog. You would think that people on a bike, whether, whatever age they are, they would say, you know, coming behind you, coming on your right. It's almost, we can't govern. Common courtesy that people really should have.
But I can only tell you as a senior that you should be, and it's not your fault, but knowing that that might happen, you have to be more aware.
Yeah, but I can't, I don't, I don't have eyes behind my back.
I understand that.
And the other thing is that I think that the, that the ordinance has twofold. One is, you're not, right now it says it's lawful to ride on the pavement, but I'm sure, I'm sure that's going to change. But the other thing is that bikes have to have a signaling thing. So if they have a bell or they have a horn, but we can see that right away. So if, if, if there are police making patrols and they see people without bikes, they can give them warnings.
We could, but again, people may not comply, just like if people are supposed to wear helmets under certain, and they don't.
Well, the helmet is not my problem. The helmet's their problem, but the bike, but the, anyway, okay, I don't want to.
Thank you.
I appreciate your point. I know. And it's something for me to think about.
Yeah, I'm going to take this off because I'm going to have a good evening.
You're not with us? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Everything.
And be careful. Is there anyone else from the public? Jim?
Anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak on any items? Please make yourself notes in Zoom by raising your hand. Okay, I have a Betsy Fisher would like to speak.
Okay, state her name and address, please.
Hello, good evening. My name is Betsy Fisher. I have a home at nine South Cambridge Avenue, right across the street from all of you. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I'd like to say hello to the chief, the mayor, the commissioners and Lisa. Thank you so much for your help earlier today. I am the owner of two dogs. One of them was attacked by the dog that resides at two South Derby Avenue recently. And that attack was the second attack by this dog within six days. And we just found out that another dog was attacked a couple of days ago.
By the same dog?
Yes.
This is. It's been attacked.
I don't, I mean, there's, yes. Yes, we're aware of that. We're aware of what's going on. We're aware of two, actually.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean interrupt you. I would just thank you. Go ahead.
That's okay. Thank you. It's more than two attacks. It's actually three attacks to date and also some aggressive behavior on leash as well. Several complaints have been, you know, statements have been written by the police at the police station, I know. And it is an extremely dangerous situation where someone innocently walking down the street with their dog is attacked by another dog. I know the first attack happened and the owners of the dog did not fix the gate. Which then enabled the second attack to happen, which happened to my dogs. An adjustment was made to the gate and I know that Pam from housing went to inspect the gate and she told me she was very kind and followed up and told me that. She was satisfied that the gate would hold the dog. But she warned me never to walk past that house anyway. And then unfortunately, this other attack happened as well. So whatever minor adjustment was made, I don't know exactly what it was. I heard the swing was just changed.
We've, we've got what the issue was. The dog's a jumper. And it wasn't the gate that was failing to hold the dog. There was, there was shutter doors we have like out back here, what do you call those? Barrier doors, like the, it was, anyway, using the shutter doors for the basement. As a jumping. Bilco doors. And so they have another issue, which is the dog can jump and it's using the Bilco doors as a stepping stone to jump over the fence.
When he wants to attack.
So we do have, we do have a bigger issue there and we are working in conjunction with the building department to, to resolve it. You have the right to sign complaints for the allowing the dog to get out of its enclosure. You can sign complaints. If we witness it, we do sign complaints. But for a complaint of the magnitude of a dog bite or something, Lisa, how many have we had reported of the dog bites? Maybe one, I think.
Yeah.
And here, this is one of the underlying problems is that it doesn't get to us. Is that the citizens fall short, not you, because I know you came in and you actually thought you signed a complaint when you filed a voluntary statement, I believe. And I think we, we settled that. I think we, we corrected.
That was somebody else.
So we did have issues with the communication of people thinking they're filing a voluntary statement. That it's a complaint and it's a voluntary statement, just acknowledging that the incident happened. There's another step after that where the complaint now goes upstairs to the court clerk and they now make that into a complaint. So nothing has gotten to our judge yet. We'll cut on that.
Where, where? Are you the one Derby and Lynn, right?
Right. The homeowner, that's the problem, the problem home is on the corner of Derby and Vet.
Okay.
Okay, so you walk by that, this dog is known to get out. So we probably are going to have to follow up with a letter saying if you cannot control your dog and keep it in. You know, but there's other avenues that you have that we don't, where you can call the, the SPCA or the animal control and let them know about this. They come out and do an investigation.
If you would allow me to, I will tell you the action I have taken so far.
Please, by all means.
My daughter was the one walking the dogs when this happened. It was a Sunday evening. Monday morning, we did go to the police station and spoke to an officer. He had my daughter fill out a statement. We were unclear what that statement was at the time and it took over an hour with this officer going back and forth and in and out of the room. We were trying to clarify multiple times exactly what the statement was. And then in a very roundabout way, he kind of indicated this really wasn't a complaint. And that all complaint would do would have a case with them to pay a fine to Vetner for having their dog out. Our biggest issue when we went there Monday morning was so that this never, ever, ever happens to anyone else again. It is terrifying. My daughter is traumatized and is afraid to walk our dogs in the neighborhood. And we should not live in a neighborhood where people have to be afraid. And I also, after that, spoke to a sergeant on the phone. I spoke to the police officer who was there, who was called by another neighbor when my daughter was attacked. I called the housing department more than once. I did call the animal control. I've written to the chief of police twice and I just wrote to the commissioner today. I would like to respectfully ask what is going to be done about this dangerous situation. And like I said. People may have filled out those statements, multiple people. And I know people have spoken with the commissioners and spoken to the, written to the mayor and spoken to the chief of police. So I, I feel like everyone is aware of this situation and it is extremely dangerous. Three dogs have been attacked. One almost died in required surgery. I, I don't want to wait for this to happen to anyone else. God forbid it would help it happen to a child or an old person. This is a combination of a dangerous dog and irresponsible owners who are not containing that dog.
Okay, so we have stuff on, on our books that we can address this. Yeah, we actually do.
Yeah, I'm reading now.
With a complaint.
Right.
And a judge is the only one.
And to that point, it says, this is one oh five fourteen A three. Any animal which upon complaint by one or more residents shall continuously or repeatedly be bothering, disturbing, biting. Or causing nuisance to said residents, said resident or residents. You can actually take the dog away from there.
And the beginning of that says, the chief of police shall take into custody any dog which does what you just said.
On complaint. I need complaint sign. I have voluntary statements. And if that, and so is, if that so is the fact, then we will have to start moving towards that process. You have to understand that I'm just getting word of this over the last few days.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I don't know who you are, who I'm speaking to. Who are you?
Chief of police.
Okay, thank you.
So we've, we've actually talked.
Uh, we have not spoken.
Somebody from your group has talked because I've read your statement. Maybe it wasn't you.
You're confused with, you called Sarah, not me.
Okay. Regardless, so we are dealing with.
Good.
I mean, it's not something that we're turning our backs on.
So how many bona fide complaints do we have?
It looks like we have three complaints that we know of, but we only have two documented. Everybody else is coming in. We have, we've only talked to one person that's been bitten, which is your dog and another dog. We have two now. One is on record from a witness that's claiming that. But the older gentleman that was allegedly had the dog, he hasn't never come in. We don't even know who that guy is. So it's tough for us to build a case when it's kind of piecemeal. Now, it's partially our fault if you were given bad information on the complaint and the voluntary statement. That happens a lot. That bothers me more than anything is that you left here thinking you were signing a complaint and you weren't. And if that so happened, we'll deal with that on a, in a separate method, but we are dealing with it. So our next step is going, go ahead.
Towards the end of that hour, it was, because we asked someone else to come in and a sergeant came in. And did explain to us at the end, the difference. And what we were told was if this was a complaint and went to the court, maybe they would get a fine. And that moment when we were so upset and traumatized and fearful. Having a court case, you know, in a month and they're going to pay a fine, it wasn't going to prevent this from happening to somebody else. That was our main concern, was making sure this dog is contained. And honestly, there's, there's statutes in the state of the New Jersey that govern how to deal with a dangerous or potentially dangerous animal. Things like it cannot be walked on a leash without a muzzle, things like it has to wear a red tag. I mean, I don't need to, you know, repeat back the laws to you. You guys are very capable of looking at it yourselves. I know you probably know all this already. But it seems like I, I know that you're waiting for more people to come forward, or if you need us to switch the writing that we did.
I just want.
We're looking for you.
I want a complaint. I want a complaint that I have something besides a statement and I want a complaint signed against this person. We didn't witness it. You need, the people that were involved in this need to come in, physically take that voluntary. Walk it upstairs with our officers to the court and sign a complaint.
Okay.
And we've already started our process of what we are going to do. But the officer that gave you information on, you know, it's only going to be a fine or whatever, I, I think that he's kind of generalizing things. When in fact that this is probably a little more serious to you. And I think that he's kind of just watering it down of what would happen. Because in the past with a lot of our local ordinances, that's what usually happens. You're not expecting a person to go to jail on a local ordinance. That doesn't happen. What usually happens is exactly that, a fine. But along with that, the officer should have said, the judge could also determine that this is dangerous and have it removed immediately. So that's the end of the thing, the conversation the police officer probably should have had with you. And most of our people are now well versed in it during this week. You know, of letting them know that, let the people sign complaints and physically walk them upstairs so they know what they're doing. So that's going to be the next move. So you should come in tomorrow or whenever you can next and I'll have one of my officers walk you upstairs. And anybody else that's been bitten or that's had that same issue, have them come in, we'll walk them upstairs and the complaints will be signed. In the meantime, we'll be looking into the legalities. I'll be talking to Tim McGuire as to what we can and should do moving forward. And we'll bring a quick resolution to this. And I'm a dog owner and I, I feel for you. I would absolutely be terrified of that too. So we're all on the same team here.
Okay, and just to, to clarify, so are you suggesting, chief, that everyone who went in and wrote a statement needs to return again and. Rewrite it or fill out something else or you're?
Exactly what he just answered. Exactly what I'm saying. Is that that was probably why you were here, what should have happened. And for whatever reason it didn't, and I'm not going to say why, but some people are satisfied with the, yeah, I just want to make it a matter of record. When in fact, the complaint is really the, the icing on the cake that really gets things documented. That gets somebody in a judicial position that can make that determination as to what happens next. And I think saying that I can just go in and take a dog, it's kind of oversimplifying what I can do. And I believe our solicitor, Tim McGuire, will say the same thing. So it really helps us move along if complaints are signed, a local ordinance or whatever. So.
Tim, do you want to, or solicit, do you want to add anything since we probably see this when you're on the bench in other cities?
Yeah, no, it's been covered. Everything that the chief said, I agree with. You, if you want to file a complaint, you have to let that be known and they will walk you through that process to file a complaint. There is a municipal ordinance. There's also a state statute. And under the state statute, if a determination is made that it's a vicious dog, serious remedies can be put in place. Now, I don't want to get your hopes up because making a determination that a dog is a vicious dog. Is a very tough legal standard to meet. But certainly the way you would want to get this process started regarding any type of action is to actually file a complaint.
I, I understand what you're saying about a vicious dog, but to get a dog deemed potentially dangerous. Requires the dog to have caused serious bodily injury. And that dog did cause serious bodily injury to the next door neighbor's dog. It grabbed it around the neck. That dog was in the air in the German Shepherd's mouth and it required surgery. So I would say absolutely that dog can be by state statute determined as potentially dangerous for causing serious bodily injury to the next.
Statute, when they say serious bodily injury, it's not for a dog, it's for a person.
No, it's, it, it doesn't say that it's.
I'm telling you the way that it's, but I'm giving you the realistic thing is that. Judges normally, when it gets to that level, will look at, has it hurt a person? Dogs will do these things. And I'm not, please don't, I'm not a dog eater. I'm a lover. So I understand. I've had small dogs. So I'm just telling you that the serious, what you think is serious may not be serious on a legal ease aspect when it gets to that position.
I, I spent a lot of time reading this and researching it and I, I, I'm not a lawyer. But I would say what I read applies to a dog and it's, it applies to the dog that got bitten. Not my dog, thank God, only had bodily injury. But the other dog for sure had serious bodily injury. And I know that there's been things redacted from the state laws. But it does say harm to another dog. I, I, I felt like I was in college with paper studying this. Oh, you know, the bottom line, we just want to live in safety. We don't want anyone to be fearful. I know people in my neighborhood.
But we totally agree with you, but I would like you to follow through with it and sign complaints. That's what I would ask of you.
I will ask, I asked them to be here. I gave them very short notice. I, I'm disappointed that.
But this is okay.
Yeah, but I will ask.
We're here twenty-four hours a day. I'm here tomorrow.
Okay.
If you get hold of them, welcome in. If it's Saturday, I'm going to pass this on to my officers and they're going to be prepared for you to come in. Now, the court office isn't open Mondays, it's open on the weekends. It'll have to wait till Monday. But it's not going to stop the process from happening. So we want you to do what you feel is best.
Okay.
That's a complaint. We agree. And we'll move it through.
After the complaint.
Ms. Fisher, whether you or anyone else, if you're going to come down and sign a complaint. You should bring whatever medical bills, actual, the physical documents.
Okay.
From the vet in with you.
So I can what?
That you got from the vet.
Okay.
Goes in with you.
Okay.
And they need, everybody that's been affected, we still only have one and a half reports. So the three reports that you're saying happened, haven't been reported to us. And that's number one is this stuff should really be reported to us. Because then we have to follow through with the dog bite aspect of it, contacting our, our city clerk who is our.
See if they're licensed.
See if they're licensed.
They're up to date with rabies.
And then we've got to quarantine them. There's a whole process. So it behooves everybody to report it to us, not online or whatever. We need them to come in and tell us these things are happening.
To my knowledge, three other people besides me have written a statement, but you're right, they're not complaints. So I will absolutely get in touch with everyone and say we need to go back and do as you suggest.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for hearing me. I, I really appreciate it. Like I said, we're, a lot of people are very, very upset and fearful. And people don't want to walk down that street. And when you have a township official and more than one say, oh, if I were you, I wouldn't go by that house. We don't want to live like that. We should be able to.
We agree with you. We are equally as upset as you are, believe me. Because we all live in this town too. It could easily happen to us. We have, both of our, two of our commissioners are within two blocks of that. So it could very easily happen. And as a matter of fact, his dog got a commissioner land grave got attacked at the farmer's market.
Yes, I heard.
You know how it affects us and we're not trying to minimize that at all, but there is a process that really works best. And the way myself and Mr. McGuire gave it to you was the best way. Complaint and.
Small question while she's on, is what is the next step after all those complaints are, are vetted?
Well, the first step is, is what I do is that the court process is going to take at least a couple of weeks to get there. What I will do in the meantime is I will have myself or my captain or one of the officers call the owner of the dog up and say. Listen, this is what's happening. Complaints have been signed. You need to secure your dog because this is going to go before our judge or a judge. And you're going to have to answer for what's happened and what we're going to do moving forward to make sure it doesn't happen again. So there is a really good process to this and that can happen fairly quick. Once the phone call happens to let the owner know or once he gets the complaints and he calls us up saying, hey, what's this about? So that'll be a very quick process. So if it happens tomorrow, I'll make the phone call tomorrow.
And can I ask a question, chief? I'm sorry to even say. If, I, I honestly believe that some people, which is why some of them aren't here right now, are maybe a little nervous. A little afraid of repercussions and don't really want to sign their names.
I gotta tell you, I mean, we've had situations like this happen. And retaliation isn't one of the responses that we, number one, take kindly to. And most people don't do it because judges and prosecutors look really poorly on people that intimidate others. In a, in a, in a time where bullying is frowned upon, it goes for the same thing for adults. We don't allow that to happen. So if that's their fear, tell them that we will not allow that to happen to them. Okay, and that's kind of like a promise that we give to everybody is that, yeah, there may be jerks out there, but once we know about it. We're going to do everything we can in our power, whether that's criminal charges or not, to make sure that person does nothing to you as a victim. You don't get victimized twice.
Yep, but Ms. Fisher, Ms. Fisher, I want to make sure that you understand. If those people are not willing to come forward. You will not be successful going into court and saying so-and-so told me this. That's what's known as hearsay. So if there are three people and you want to show that there were three attacks, they have to show up.
Right, understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Jim, anyone else in, in the?
Is anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak on any items? Please make yourself notes in Zoom by raising your hand or within the chat feature and you'll be recognized. Do not see anyone else.
All right, thank you. So a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do not have an executive section, session, correct?
Nope.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Good night, everybody. Thank you. Have fun and be safe.
Yes, thank you. Have a great weekend, everyone.
Thank you.
So, chief, want to back?